All right. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, April 19th. At nine o'clock, the Curry County Board of Commissioners meeting, business meeting. And I have been remiss in the last few months about introducing my fellow board members and county council and interim director of operations Ted Fitzgerald on my far left, Brad Alcorn, vice chair, and Jonathan J. Trost as our newly elected, newly appointed commissioner. And then, I don't know if anybody in here is a MASH fan, the old show MASH, JJ is like our radar. He amazes all of us, I think, with his recall. He can remember things and stuff that, it's just amazing. So with that, we have a full agenda. And we're going to call this meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen. Amendment, approval of the agenda. Additions, corrections?
I don't have any.
Good boy.
I'll move to approve the agenda in a second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Public comments. Mary Rowe is first. And she has informed me that it might be a little over three minutes. And she is, sorry, but that's just the way it is, so.
That's right. And thank you, Commissioner Herzog. I'm Mary Rowe. I'm here to speak about the exploitation of our citizens during the housing crisis. When the cost of rental units became sky high during the COVID pandemic, speculators from out of our area quickly bought rental units, gave renters termination notices, remodeled or just painted and repaired, then rented them out at exorbitant prices. And rentals that had no recent work were rented at much higher prices to new tenants. Just as we were ordered to stay home, the four-plex I lived in was sold, so I had to listen to extreme construction in the apartment above me for two months in multiple rooms at the same time, with heavy objects crashing and a buzzsaw for 12 hours a day while paying the same rent. I was promised that if I endured this, I could stay, but that was a lie. And I had to move during the COVID lockdown so that my unit could be remodeled. The owner raised the rent about 150% and rented to short-term medical employees. The apartment that I next moved to was $850 a month rent to the tenant who moved out two days before I moved in, but without any repairs or cleaning and with a non-working shower and smoking wall heater, it was $1,200 a month rent to me plus electricity. That did not leave me funds for medicine or medical treatment, which caused health problems. It was the only place I could get. The owner came to Oregon and Curry County once a month harassing tenants to pay rent immediately because he could not afford the place. We had plenty of prospective buyers in our apartments, and all residential tenants were terminated. Then continual extreme construction for many months, rarely with notification. There were two months of continual and ear-splitting sledgehammering directly below me, with my body and teeth shaking from the ceiling being sledgehammered until I lost a tooth as a result. I could not hear a phone call nor do task. Meanwhile, the owner rented the basement to two families in one space, which was not a legal apartment and did not have windows in the bedrooms. The tenants were sick from lack of air, including asthma. It is a fire hazard and illegal. They pay $1,300 plus electricity. The county referred me to the city of Gold Beach and vice versa. Garrett told me that the county and city joining forces would be advantageous. Please consider that. I am displaced. There are no funds to help displace citizens at present. Please invite ARP proposals immediately to help us with shelter and rent deposits to save our lives. ORCA is too slow and inept helping with what they have. Please quickly have a member of this BOC apply to be on the ORCA board to advocate for Curry citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Clay is next.
My name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. I've had a wake-up call this last week dealing with trying to get a grant request for $20,000 from OHA approved today. After getting approval from the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council at last Thursday night's meeting, I filed a request Friday morning to, only to learn that all agenda items are required to be filed a minimum of seven days before the regular commissioners meeting. I checked my blood pressure, and it was 181 over 83 sitting at my computer. For my own good, I have decided not to volunteer for any new projects in this county and pull the grant from the agenda for next time because of that. I will finish the commitments I made previously and sit on my helium hands for anything new. I do have a few comments, closing comments. Please remember Lady Liberty's message to your immigrant ancestors. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. Take our poor, troubled, and homeless citizens with, treat our poor homeless troubled citizens with respect. For those who keep voting against property tax increases and the lack of cojones to really make a tax district for the law enforcement, realize that everybody is voting particularly, partially to defund law enforcement in this county. We're actually one of only two counties to defund county health department. Over the years, I've been discouraged to hear all the homophobic face-based hate from commissioners and the public using this meeting to spew ignorance about LGBTQIA two-spirit youth and adults. If there is a God in a heaven, realize that your God created at least 23 sexual orientations that we know of currently and about as purposely, and as I see it, purposely to surprise tests not in the Bible, to see how human beings would really treat all of God's creatures when nobody's looking. If you get to the pearly gate, St. Peter will ask you, how did you take care of and nurture the earth and all of its inhabitants that God created? It will be too late for those who disparage LGBT people, and I think you will guess where they will be going. So that being said, I hope the citizens take heed, and I'm out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Val, you've asked to speak, but you want to, I know this is about the presentation with Oregon.
Yeah.
Okay. So would you rather speak now or just maybe?
Either one.
Okay.
Whatever you like.
I think it's up to you, but.
What presentation's next?
Presentation, and then if you need, if you want to speak, I think that would be the time. So Steve, come on up.
Hello, I'm Steve Byerland in Naseka Beach. I've been working with the county on fisheries, and I've been working on fisheries in the Rogue Basin for 53 years now. The, I've had a bit of a contract with the county for $500 a month, and that contract, to my understanding, had been not necessarily re-signed or redone, but the commission had told me when it came up that it was rolled over and done, but I had to have no paperwork, you know, to show that. I don't believe you do either, because I don't think it was really followed through in paperwork, you know, but it was verbal, you know. What we've done over the, since about 2019, 2020, is we've created a coalition between counties at one time, or depending on the subject of the time, Jackson, Curry, Josephine, and surprisingly, one of our top members being Coos County, you know. And they are very concerned about ocean fisheries and the fish that the Rogue contributes to the fishery out there. The fishery on the southern Oregon coast in the ocean used to have a contribution of salmon, king salmon or chinook, to the ocean fishery of 60,000 fish. Back in the day, you know, in the 80s, 70s, you know, there was, you'd go to, in the summertime to Brookings, and you would almost need a shuttle to park your rig. Sometimes it was so far away from the ramp, you know, to go out. Hundreds and hundreds of boats were going out. It was a very, very busy port harbor for the salmon fishery that lasted all summer, you know. Now that, if there is a fishery, you know, off of Brookings, there, you know, it's hard to even fill the parking lot, you know. And it's a, been quite a decline economically. And then the Rogue itself here, you could go over to the port today or tomorrow, or, you know, maybe on your way out, and look and see how many boats or trailers are in the parking lot over there that, you know, you can kind of guess which one are assigned to river fishing by the size of the trailer, pretty much, you know. But the, this is mid-April, and in the past, that parking lot would be completely full. There'd be, you know, 100 boats or more upriver, Elephant Rock, John's Hole, you know, Clay Banks, and so on on the lower end, and then going on upriver Clear Pass, Agnes, you know, there would be more boats parking at Quasaten and so on. Big economic input. We've had quite a decline in the number of spring chinook, which are primarily the fish that contributes to the ocean fishery. Doing scale samples and whatnot in the ocean, that ocean fishery for chinook was 98.5% spring chinook, what was caught out there, which surprised me, because I thought they were false chinook that were being caught out there, but they weren't. They were spring chinook from the Rogue River, you know. The biggest portion of the fish caught out there are from the Klamath and Sacramento, you know, but the Rogue contributed a lot, you know. Coos County understands that, you know. Not many people do, really, because it's been washed away. And if you take away the 60,000 fish that were caught in the ocean that we know aren't being caught now because they're not there, you know, and you take away the harvest of wild fish, which we're not allowed to harvest wild fish until June, spring chinook in the river, you take that away, you remove Savage Rapids Dam, which was supposed to add 4,000 fish to the spring run, you remove Gold Ray Dam, you know, and then there's a number of other smaller dams, and your fishery is still declining, that shows that those things are masking how bad it really is, that we're not thinking about, you know, what has been done. But we've been very involved, and having the county behind me to be able to work on this stuff really helps, you know, when we go and, you know, talk to ODFW or, you know, our partners, or being able to pull things together. We've got a, Senator Merkley and his office have been extremely helpful, and partially through, you know, being a county member, you know, and having the other counties involved. He has stated that it's a legacy project for him to rebuild the runs of the Rogue. He's putting his office fully behind it. They've been nothing but great. The, and some things have happened, you know. Not only the hatchery on the Rogue was designed to produce the mitigation for the building of the Lost Creek Project. They were supposed to bring back 13,020 adult spring chinook to the hatchery annually, which then allowed for, you know, a good harvest, you know, that was after harvest. Well, we're down to bringing back 2,000 instead of 13,000. And so the viability of a spring chinook fishery is really questionable on most years. This year, it's doing better, you know, but that's because of the high water, I believe, you know, makes the fish more accessible, because we know where they're at, close to the shores than out all the way across the river. Fishery is really important to Curry County, and we've lost timber harvest from the federal government. Federal government now is closing the ocean fishery, you know. The, and I want to make a note on closing the ocean fishery, is I would like to see the county pay attention to this, and I'll help draft a letter or whatever to Senator Merkley, asking him to talk to the Pacific Fish Management Council or send them a letter. And when they say that the west coast is closed to salmon fishing, the definition of coast is shoreline inward. If the ocean is closed, you know, and, but they tend to not make that stipulation, which to our tourism, you know, is a hurtful thing. That's one of the things we need to do here pretty soon going forward. We're also working on getting the hatchery repaired. Hatchery has been in disrepair for over 50 years. We have, JJ, do you happen to have the PowerPoint?
I don't, but Eric does.
If he can find it, I don't know if he can hear me or not, but if he can find it and then put it up, I appreciate it. To show some of the things that were done, the letter I received from the county asked for receivables, what we had done, you know, and that shows some of it. It's actually from lobbyist Coos County Supplies in Washington, DC. He's an expert with the Corps of Engineers. He's been invaluable. We need to feed him information and, you know, and direct him, you know, which we have been doing. But having him being able to go across the street and talk to the Corps of Engineers in Washington, DC has been invaluable. And Coos County supplies that as their contribution to our efforts to work on the fisheries. Curry County's contribution has been to fund me, to help drive the process, you know, and the process wouldn't exist without being driven from Curry County. When you think about Josephine County, Josephine County, there is no spring fishery in Josephine County. The fish just blast through there, you know, and very, very few fish caught in Josephine County, and they're economically strapped as well, you know. And Jackson County, the hatchery is in, but they have a great fear that this process is leading to asking for dam removal, you know, so they're very tentative, you know, on, and we're not talking about dam removal. We're talking about meeting the mitigation requirements. Going forward, we have a number of things that we're on the edge of, and one of those is I talked to the regional manager for the Corps, as well as the chief of the Corps of Engineers, Colonel Hinton, and the, and mentioned to them that I didn't believe the Corps of Engineers wanted to be in the fish-raising business, you know, and they've tried to give the hatchery to the state, you know, or get somebody else to take it over, but their mitigation requirements require them to do it. And so instead of fighting, getting them to improve their fish management dollars that are put into the hatchery and whatnot, maybe we need a new managing agency to manage the hatchery. And all of the fish studies on the Rogue, when the hatchery was put in for mitigation, were done by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service does raise fish. They do understand, they have biologists and whatnot, and so trying to create a partnership between the Corps, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and ODFW is something that's really huge and is on the radar going forward. And if we can get that done, it'll make considerable difference, because we'll have willing partner to do the recovery. Right now, we do not have a willing partner, and Colonel Hinton and Eric Peterson, the regional manager for our district, had no clue, the hatchery was in disrepair. They had no clue what their mitigation requirements were. When you do a federal project, there's an environmental impact statement needs to be done as part of the NEPA laws to be done, and when that is completed, there is a recorded decision that comes out of that. A recorded decision brings the counties, the ODFW, the fisheries, you know, everybody together, you know, citizens, you know, users, to make comments to create the recorded decision. Recorded decision says how we're going to manage the project, and that's the directive to the Corps, what to do. In this case, there was no recorded decision ever made. So we've been operating for 50 years now without a directive of how to operate. The Corps didn't even have a copy of the environmental impact statement. It took me a number of years to find it, and then they asked me, I have a letter from them, asking me to supply it to them, you know. And so it's not really a question of why haven't they done anything. They have no directive to, they have no recorded decision to do it. So thoughts that we need to discuss and think about is, do we do a supplemental EIS, which costs quite a bit of money, you know, on fisheries, so we can get a recorded decision? Do we seek another partner, such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and come to an understanding? And there's been about a 90% decline in the hatchery fish coming into the hatchery due to disrepair. There was no electrical line to the hatchery until we started this project. We started this project through Curry County and then built onto it, but we now have electric line being installed at the hatchery for the first time in six years. It had blown up. They've been running on generators that have been failing, you know, and haven't been able to run at full capacity and have had die-offs of the fry and whatnot because they haven't been able to keep the water temperatures warm enough. And it also affects their growth and their release diseases. The water line coming into the hatchery a few years ago, they turned it on, it wouldn't flow, you know, so they got into the pump and looked, and I could show you pictures of the hatchery, I mean, hatchery inflow pipes totally clogged with algae and rust and corrosion. And hatchery staff went down to Ace Hardware and bought plastic pipes and bypassed it so they would have water to the hatchery to keep the fish alive. That is still the way it is. There's no filtration, you know, come straight out of the lake, and the lake has six months of toxic blue-green algae bloom. There's so much that hasn't come to be understood of what's going on, that, and we're uncovering it day by day, but we have the partnerships and the people are paying attention. And Senator Merkley's office say this is a legacy project for them, not going to be there forever. He's got the rest of our congressional district representatives behind him, you know, and so we're moving ahead, we're getting funding. I said we got the program up here. These are some of our partners that we have, you know. Right now, the list would go on, you know. Can we go to the next page, please? This is a letter from our lobbyist in Washington, DC, and this is his contact information that you'll have, you know. Next page, please. You can kind of read this, the, we were getting $0 for the hatchery, you know, repairs and maintenance. Nothing was moving, nothing was happening, until Curry County stepped in under my leadership. And we've received what's going to be about $7 million with the latest earmarks that are in the budget. And that isn't the final for this year, because there's more with the investment, interstructure investment stuff. We're going to be able to get some money from that, too, probably, you know. And so I wouldn't be surprised to see us pick up another million to $2 million. And in the last three years, it's pretty phenomenal, because you go from zero to, you know, receiving what we are, but the awareness, the partnership, the things we pull together. The key thing to me for the commissioners to think about is, has our progress so far been acceptable? And I think it has been overwhelming, really, you know. And then what do we want to do in the future? Are we just going to turn away from it? You know, it's a small amount of money, you know, that helps us keep going, you know, and the, I pay for all my own fuel, all my own internet, you know, and all the costs involved, you know, and the, and was given $5,000 a year from the county, which didn't have to, I don't believe had to go through the budget process, you know, but $5,000 from the county, which I divided into $500 a month, you know, and so that comes in, and it is helpful. I'm not a rich guy, but it's, we've just done a heck of a lot, and it's very, very important to continue the process. I have a letter here that I'm going to submit that is from Dan, excuse me. I was in Medford all day yesterday, and I got home and my internet, or my email I had from Dan Van Dyke, the head biologist in, on the Upper Rogue, and we're trying to do gravel introduction to the Upper Rogue and the Upper Applegate. In the Upper Rogue, they did a gravel study. Gravel does not jump over a dam. It settles in the pool, you know, and so it stops migration of gravel. Gravel washes away. And through this process, we were able to get foot pressure on ODFW and the Corps to do a study on the loss of gravel in the Upper Rogue. They did, and they found that there was 161,000 yards of gravel that had been, spawning gravel had been displaced. We're trying to start adding that back. That was a 61% decline in the amount of gravel that was spawning between Medford and Lost Creek Dam. They now call it William G. Stamm, but 61% decline. The best figures I can come out with is we've lost 60% of the spawning of our wild fish, spring chinook. They all spawn in the main stem, you know, pretty much. There's a few up Big Butte Creek. But anyhow, the letter I got, email I got from Dan Van Dyke was a hurry up, need it by today, you know, he gave me yesterday and today, but I wasn't home yesterday, to a letter of support for getting engineering and of gravel studies for the Upper Rogue, to where we're going to put it, how deep it needs to be, and so on. And he would like a letter from the county, you know, Curry County. Bob Mayne has already submitted his, and I have a copy of it. I contacted Bob and asked if it was all right if Curry County followed his letter, you know, and use, kind of use the verbiage or whatever, it isn't much, you know, just saying that they support gravel engineering and whatnot. And if we could get that okayed and have JJ email that to Dan Van Dyke, you know, then that'll go along with their request for doing that, and he thinks it'll help quite a bit, you know.
Are there any questions? Questions?
I got a, I do have a question. Earlier, you said that Ray Bucheager is a lobbyist for Coos County?
Right.
Is it Coos County, or is he with the port? I mean, because I was trying, I was trying to see your coalition and, because normally, I mean, every time I've worked with Ray, it's regarding the Corps of Engineers, and that's usually coordinated through the ports.
Right. That is, that's the connection between Coos County and Ray's company, you know, the company he works for, that, and he primarily does port dredging and information, but in those contacts, he's always visiting with the Corps of Engineers personnel in Washington, DC, and he's very educated on what the Corps is capable of doing, you know, their capability numbers, how much money they're going to have, you know, in order to apply to any project. And if you ask for money outside of that in the budget, you're probably not going to get it, you know. So he's been very helpful in directing, getting the right amount that we can apply for. And Ray has not been a fisheries guy in the business, you know, and he doesn't call himself a lobbyist, you know, but he is, works for the different ports along the coast, and he's a fisherman, and he has kind of a passion for this, you know. And it's not that we don't debate a little bit, you know, because there's give and take, you know, and, but Ray kind of calms me down because I think things should be done, you know, and he tries to look at it like, well, needs to be done, but what capability does the Corps have to do that, you know, and try to work within their structure. And if we lost Ray, we would be much poorer for it, you know.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, so Steve, I applaud your passion towards, your lifetime commitment towards the fisheries and the industry itself. I think you've proven that. The, there's a couple of things that, you know, I asked for prior to the meeting, right? And, uh, you, you know, the deliverables is what, you know, you, you had, um, been working on. And I'd asked about, um, what the, the, or the receivables, use what you sent. And I asked for about deliverables, which generally in a, in a contract sense, um, would be, um, you know, if we're, if you're being paid, um, going forward, what, what is anticipated uh, for, with that effort, right? Going forward. I got a lot, we got a lot about what has been done. Um, and then asked for, um, any reports you've provided, uh, to prior commissions so I could make myself more knowledgeable about what's already been provided, um, things of that nature. Um, your, your, your last, um, your last slide in your presentation? Um, I wasn't exactly sure how to take that. Given two options, uh, are we not satisfied with your service or do we not like fish? And I felt like that was a, a little inappropriate. Maybe you didn't like being questioned about the contract itself, even though it needed to be renewed or whatever the case may be. Um, and that's just good governance, right? Reviewing a contract.
Well, sure.
Um, and so I, I felt like that was a, a bit of a, a slight, um, because really it's option C, uh, evaluating the effectiveness of the contract going forward and if it was, uh, fiscally responsible. Um, I don't think, any of us don't care about fish. And so I think that, that, um, that one caught a, a little off guard. Um, the, uh, now, the contract, as I understand it, as you just stated, is for, uh, five thousand dollars annually that you divided into five hundred dollars a month, which actually is six thousand dollars annually. So we've been paying you an extra thousand dollars a year, um, with, outside of the contract scope. Um, so I, I, I'm not sure exactly how to address that.
I don't know. How, how did it, how'd that happen?
Um, any, any increase, the, I actually asked for more than that, you know? Came back in and asked for, uh, seven fifty a month, you know? Uh, and, uh, the budget wasn't to where they could do that, you know? And, uh, so, uh, it, it'd been mostly by discussion. We'd, would have meetings in here, you know, with, uh, one or, uh, the commissioners because we couldn't have two, you know? And whatnot, and would talk over, you know, the situation. Sometimes it was, uh, Chris Pash and sometime it was, was Court Boyce, you know? Um, uh, how we're gonna move ahead and, you know, before any, uh, uh, type of real action was taken. I mean, other than talking to somebody or trying to, you know, get them to go someplace before we tried to really put pressure on. And we'd actually discussed for quite a while about, uh, filing a lawsuit against the Corps of Engineers for, uh, not following the mitigation requirements they were supposed to follow. The, uh, law firm that we talked to was going to do it for free. But their advice was to go back to the Corps and do everything you can to work with the Corps in order to solve the issues, you know? And, um, had a kind of a heart-to-heart with, uh, Colonel Hinton and Eric Peterson. And they were both appalled that they were, uh, what was going on at the hatchery and with the fisheries and, uh, assured that they were willing to work, uh, within what they could do with the budget, you know? Outside of the budget, then we have to go to, uh, Senator Merkley to try to put pressure on to increase that, you know? Um, and so the, the contract was, was never really ever workable, you know? Uh, one of the things they required in there was, uh, insurance, uh, bond or insurance that came to two thousand dollars a year out of the five thousand, you know? And, uh, so I came back to the, uh, commissioners and, and talked about that and they said that they would bypass it, not, not to worry about it. Now, but I don't, I haven't got any paperwork, you know, other than having talked to commissioners and, and stuff about it. And most, all of our reports, they told me were going, uh, on our website, you know, and, uh, would be available, you know, so.
Okay, that explains it because I, I mean, I, I did a, I did some research and I found that there was an original contract for five thousand and then it was re, it was renewed two times. And, um, but that's not, so we've actually overpaid him somewhere in the neighborhood of four thousand dollars based on the contract. And, uh, you know, just so everybody understands how, how this works, none of that's okay. You, you don't, you don't, you don't bind the county by talking to a commissioner. No, that, that, however that happened, that, that we, that's not, that's not legal. So, I mean, we need to, we need to, uh, address that.
Brett?
A lot of my speaking to the county has been right here from this podium, you know?
So, Steve, um, you said the county hasn't paid you a lot of money. It's really not a lot of money. We paid you twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. To me, that's a lot of money. And, um, I'm a new commissioner. I just ran for office. And to me, this contract, it's not, it's not, uh, about your ability. I think you're an expert. I think you're, I think you're really good at what you do. And to me, this contract is not about the importance of fishing and the industry of fishing and, and the value it has in Curry County. It's not about that. It's actually about public trust. And I say that because when I ran for office, um, this contract was brought to my attention as an example of why people didn't trust county government. And I'll, and I'll share some facts with you and the, the facts that I'm gonna share with you are, they're not to point blame, they're not to, to, to be accusatory at all. They're just, they're chronological facts because I, I tend to listen to evidence. That's my, my old job. So, uh, in two thousand sixteen, uh, you helped Commissioner Boyce with his campaign and you were compensated for that. You got fifteen hundred and fifty, fifty dollars for that. And then in two thousand eighteen, uh, Commissioner Boyce was involved in a litigation with the county. During that litigation, you helped him defend his position with the county. And you submitted invoices with Mr. Boyce. And the total invoices were about eighteen hundred dollars. Then in, uh, on April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, um, this contract came before the Board of Commissioners. And Mr. Boyce properly declared there was a conflict, that he had a relationship with you and, and he was conflicted in, in voting. However, after that, Mr. Boyce did vote on the contract. Commissioner Gold said no, Commissioner Pass said yes. And if Commissioner Boyce wouldn't have voted, then you wouldn't have got the contract, but he did. Then July nineteenth, um, Mr. Boyce submitted a claim to the county for reimbursement. That claim was for three thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And it had, uh, also requested eighteen hundred dollars in, um, fees for you for helping him during that litigation. Did you get a check for that, for that eighteen hundred dollars?
From Commissioner Boyce?
From anybody?
Well, the first time that was billed, I got a check from, uh, Commissioner Boyce, but not, uh, the second time.
Okay. So then September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, the contract got extended and again, Mr. Boyce voted for that. And then, uh, April twenty eighth, uh, to twenty twenty-one, there's another extension to which Mr. Boyce, uh, voted for. So, to the taxpaying community, the people that came up to me when I was running for office, the people that brought this to my attention, that doesn't, that doesn't look good. It gives the appearance that you've been treated favorably and that you, um, you were compensated inappropriately. So, again, this was an example that was given to me as why people lack trust in county leadership. So when I look at these facts, um, it's concerning. And twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars is a lot of money.
That from the county?
Yes. So, public trust is extremely valuable to me because we are trying to build that back. All three of us up here are trying to do that. And, and I don't want, um, any cloud of suspicion over any contract that I'm associated with. We're gonna follow the law, we're gonna follow county policy and we're gonna do what's ethically right. We all agreed to that and, in, uh, our very, my very first meeting this year. And I don't feel that this is ethical to do. I don't feel it's appropriate to do. And while I support your efforts and I support the purpose, the cause, I cannot support funding this. I can't support continuing to pay you, um, money, especially when we haven't received quarterly reports, additional reports, we haven't gotten really any information, um, from you about the progress. So, if it's a written letter that will, that comes from us to support your efforts, we'll gladly offer my support for that, um, but not financially.
Yeah, Commissioner. The, um... It's some of what you spoke to about, you know, relationship with, uh, with Commissioner Boyce, you know, uh, were, I don't know what that's got to do with my fisheries work, you know? That was prior to my fisheries work, you know? And, uh, with the county. So you're, you're going back to something, you know, and helping him out with a lawsuit. Uh, he brought me a, uh, shopping bag full of receipts, you know? And asked me to record the receipts. If you had had done it, or Jay had had done it, or John had had done it, I would have, you know, have done it, you know? And, but he asked me to put that into, so I put it into a, uh, Excel format, you know? And then the lawsuit that we came about, the county really screwed up. The county was suing him for a timeframe that he had no expenses, you know? There was expenses before that, but they put the wrong timeframe in. When they put the wrong timeframe in, then the judge, you know, said it didn't, uh, come out, but we couldn't see that until after the receipts were, you know, uh, put in the Excel format. And he was very bad at taking care of, uh, receipts and whatnot. And as far as, uh, reports, uh, my reports have been here at the podium and I was told by the county commissioners that I did not need to submit all of my, you know, my work by the hour and what I've done, you know, and so on, you know? And, uh, that, uh, was part of the agreement for what is a low amount of fees paid to me, you know? And, uh, the reason why it comes to twenty-two thousand dollars is because of the timeframe that it's been being done, you know? It's not annually, you know? And, uh, so, um...
So, it's, so Mr. Byerlin, and it's, again, this has nothing to do with the circumstances of the litigation, nothing to do with the circumstances of your efforts to get Commissioner Boyce elected, nothing to do with that, other than the relationship. And I'll, and I'll, I'll give you an analogy. Uh, I, I enjoy fishing and I have a boat and I have a boat with a good friend of mine. We, we both put money in, bought the boat, we take it out when we can, although I don't go out as much as I used to. But we, we enjoy going out on the water. Now, if he came here before this committee, before this Board of Commissioners and he had a project and he asked this Board of Commissioners for money, I would not vote on that. That would be unethical and I wouldn't do it. And if they split their vote, I still wouldn't vote. It would not be the right thing to do because it creates a perception in the community that I would be giving favoritism and taking care of my friend. It's what's commonly referred to as the good old boy network and we're not doing that here.
Well, I think you're, uh, putting some things on me, they're not on me, they're on, uh, uh, prior commission, you know? And, uh, that, uh, is, uh, is not wrong, not right, sir, you know? I don't really accept it. And, uh, you seem to have made up your mind, uh, and that's fine, you know? The, uh, and I, but, uh, for the type of money that we're talking about, I don't take disrespect or abuse, you know? And I try not, and I try not to give it to you and I don't think that's what you're doing. But I refuse to accept that. And, um, the, any funds that you folks, uh, have paid me, you can stop the contract and end it, you know? Uh, anytime a contract is, uh, negotiated or talked about, it's a partnership. It goes back and forth, you know? You know, you think that I, if you think that I did something, uh, under the table or illegally, whatnot, how would I know what the court bo, voted on? I attend a couple or two or three, uh, commissioner meetings a year, you know? I don't, I'm not, you know, a, a prize to what you guys talk about privately or in executive session or what some citizen happened to speak up about or whatever. Uh, I have no control over that. But, uh, I will tell you, I've run, uh, my business with the county above board and honestly, and one of the reasons why we have the position we have with the, uh, the players is the fact that I do that.
I, I have a question about the coalition?
Yes, sir.
That you formed? What are the Kokeel Tribe? How much do they contribute?
They have not contributed, uh, dollars, you know?
So who's, so, so basically what, what I'm hearing is that, is that the only, the only organization that's contributing actual money is Curry County because we don't really have anything else to contribute?
Uh, Jolting County contributed five thousand dollars for work previously done, one-time thing, you know?
That was back at the beginning?
That was back at the beginning, yes.
Okay.
And, which I didn't understand, but that's what they, you know, they came up with.
It seems to me that if we were gonna do a coalition regarding this particular issue, you, it would be more effective to engage the people that are, because even, even with Curry County, Curry County is, is one step removed from, from the revenue that's generated by fishing. Seems like every single port, every single city should be involved in this and they should be. And, and also, you know, if you wanna, if you want, I, I, I understand that you have, that you have personal relationships with, with people at the Corps and that, that's valuable, that's valuable. But a bigger voice is also valuable too. And, and I feel like, I feel like that, that, um, there should be, there should be, you know, there should be involvement from all of those entities that are, that are, you know, I mean, if, if a salmon, if a salmon season happens out here, ocean salmon season, every one of these ports benefits greatly and, and, and it's a, a lot of money. And, um, you know, that's, I, I look at that, I think, I, because it, it, it just, it seems, that's, that's the other thing that strikes me odd about this because I just feel like there should be a, if it's gonna be a coalition, we should, we should have it be a, a major deal. And I mean, it's a legitimate issue. And also there, you know, there's, I don't, we're focusing on, 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 on the hatchery. That's great. What are we doing about, what are we doing about like bycatch in the, in the Hague fishery? How, who do you talk to about that? Not the Corps. You, but that's probably impacting the, the fishery more than, than the hatchery, actually, because the amount, the amount of bycatch that's, that's going in there and getting, and getting thrown over the side is gargantuan. It dwarfs, it dwarfs everything that's ever, that, that, that comes in otherwise. And, um, that's the thing you deal with nymphs. So I think, I mean, I, I look at this and I think we could do a more efficient job of, of, of at least alerting people to the problems that are out there. And that's, that, that's, that's where I'd like to go with it.
I, I have, uh, contacts with nymphs, uh, Lance Krusick, uh, out of Roseburg, uh, we email back and forth and keep him posted and stuff, you know? When you talk about the coalition, you're exactly right, you know? Forming the coalition was something that was originally talked about when we, uh, started this project, you know? And, but the coalition was to be formed by the county commissioners contacting other entities and bringing them on board, you know? They were to work with Jackson County, uh, Commissioner, uh, Pash went with me to Jackson County where we gave a presentation, um, and, uh, also, uh, to, uh, Jolting County where we gave a presentation. And the, uh, so we did do some reach out, you know? Uh, Coos County came on, on their own, you know, and, uh, asked to, you know, basically join or be part of it. And their contribution is their lobbyists that they, uh, give us access, access to that, uh, because they pay a, a retainer, you know? And, uh, that's- And that's been absolutely wonderful to have, you know. But I think that decision's gonna be yours, you know, obviously, you know. But I did not do anything that was under the table in any way, you know. And I won't accept that.
No, Steve, I, I don't think that's, that wasn't your intention.
No.
And your integrity is, to me, is above, way above board. And so, no, I, I, that's not, but I'll, I will tell you that if, in fact, this, this commission says there is no new contract, I will personally take you to Coal Rivers Fish Hatchery and, and, and be with you and pay for the fuel myself. Because I know, in fact, we addressed this in our, our strategic plan, local fish counts are part of our economic development in our strategic plan. And I know your heart and your dedication to this. And so I will, you know, make that public, that I will support you every way I can, and I know you had that support from Court and Chris, and you know, I have that connection with Coal Rivers Fish Hatchery, lived there for a year while they built that fish hatchery. And for it to get in the shape that it's gotten into over these years, just seems like yesterday, but it's 50-plus years. It's, it's just sad. And so I'll make that commitment to you. And I would never in any way question your integrity.
Commissioner, I have a, a suggestion, you know, that might solve this. I'm no longer fish representing for the county. That does not mean the county does not need one. You know, if you think I've done something wrong, or you wanna move on from me, don't dissolve the position. Replace the position, you know. And the person that I would suggest, you know, for that is Val Early, you know. But I haven't talked to her, you know, so, but I could give, you know, I've got thousands of pages of documentation, you know, and contacts and whatnot, you know, that I can pass on to, on to her and, or whoever, you know, and help with it. But whoever it is has to be somebody that has a vast knowledge of the fisheries, you know. They can't be a newbie, because you're not going to be able to come up to speed, you know. And, but that would be a suggestion, you know, and I think all the counties should have a fisheries coordinator, you know. And it's, it's that important, you know, so.
With that segue, Val, would you like to speak?
Well, real quick, I just, one thing, um, is, and Steve, I think what, you know, what, what, what I think makes a lot of sense, solves a lot of the transparency issue, you know, and essentially would be, I feel a little more appropriate is, so, you know, essentially, you've been a consultant. You've been a consultant on a flat rate with with little public perceived input, or reporting, right? In terms of like, here's my financial reports, here's my, here's my, my monthly report, my, my whatever, quarterly. Which would be in a normal consultant fashion somewhat expected, right? Normally consultants bill you for what they have produced. Or what they've been asked to go out and produce. And so, you know, I think if, if we decide to move forward, that would be a much more transparent agreement than a, than a, than a set amount, you know, with, with little required reporting back. If that makes sense. If we were to move forward in any circumstance, that makes more, more sense. Now, you know, the, the home run for any consultant that's in a coalition is that all members of the coalition are giving to that consultant, right? Now, that, that is, I think, where I think most are most comfortable when you're in a coalition. You know, I, I, I see that you, you know, you represent in the coalition several non-financially binding members, right? And if this, if this commission were to decide to withdraw our, our financial commitment, would that essentially dissolve the coalition?
I don't believe so, you know. The coalition is, you know, around a, the subject itself, you know. Our fisheries have gone to hell, you know, if you look at the Kokeel River, you know. That's important to Curry County as well, and all the history. There is no fishing for salmon at all on the Kokeel. The smallmouth bass in there are wiping the run out. Their returns are absolutely ridiculous. And the Kokeel Indians are probably in a way more involved in this coalition because of their needs, you know, on the Kokeel, you know.
Are there, are there point of contacts for the coalitions, like, is there, is there people that, because I don't even, I don't, I wouldn't know who essentially it is for us at Curry County. But is there, is there point of contacts in Josephine Jackson, all the members listed? Coos, Douglas, the tribe? Are there, are there, I guess, you know, in a coalition, is there, is there a specific member point of contact to reach out to? To say, hey, what's your involvement, because, you know, Curry's carrying the bag here?
Yeah. The, there is, you know, Josephine County asked me to send it to, any information to Wally Hicks, which he then distributes to all three commissioners, you know. And, but there are commissioners, you know. Dan DeYoung has been here, testified, you know. And Herman Berziger was at the Corps meeting at the the hatchery, you know. And so I'm not sure who really it is, you know. Douglas County is also involved in a, in a more minor way, you know. But they're concerned, one of the things with, even more so now, is Tim Freeman is the gentleman over there. And the Rock Creek Hatchery burned down in the fire. Rock Creek fish are now being reared at Coal Rivers. Coal Rivers, you know, ability to produce fish, you know, is a concern to Douglas County, you know. And so it gets wider and wider, you know. But there are people we, you know, talk to occasionally, you know. Everybody's really busy, you know, but we try to keep them informed, especially when something comes up, you know, we have time. The gravel thing that I was gonna hand to you folks today is an example, but I mean, there's no timeframe, you know, when it needs to be in today, you know, to really shake the trees and get more letters and stuff, you know.
Sure. You know, I never thought about it, Steve, but, so with that dam there, the gravel has, that is below the dam, is that the gravel that has made this spit at the mouth of this? I mean, eventually, it, it comes all the way?
Well, it...
Right, because there's no more Savage Rapids?
It would be easy to think that, but it's not.
Okay.
The, what has caused this gravel here in the port to do is that up at Ferry Hole, there used to be a stream that came, went back around a island, you know, that comes down to Elephant Rock. And that foot flow, you know, through there, but with vehicles driving across there, it got shallower and shallower and shallower with a compaction. So when we have a flood, it wouldn't wash it away. It would add rock to it, but it wouldn't wash it away. People drive on it again, and it raised it, and raised it. And I talked to the scientists that were doing the study, and I took them up there and showed them that, you know. And I said, when you raise this five feet up, it puts the water pressure in the other channel. The other channel then wipes out the gravel deposits that are above John's Hole there. And the county's having trouble with the North Bank Road. That's a reason, that's part of it, you know. And, because now it goes down there with such force and makes that turn, that it wiped out those gravel bars and pushed them down into the estuary, you know. And in order to stop that, gotta stop the gravel, my, Irish compaction there. And it needs to be dug down back where it was to allow a relief valve when the water gets high, you know, take that water away. And it would help over time solve the issue, you know. But it's gonna, no matter what the county does at that corner, I've been around for a long time, fishing there, it's gonna eat, keep eating away at it, you know. It's just gonna be money after money after money until the reason for it is solved.
Makes sense.
No truer words have ever been spoken.
But the idea of putting a piece of machinery in that river and doing work is like...
Well, so he's talking about the bar, though, it's, I mean, it's, the problem is you have, you have vehicles driving around, creating compaction, and that's not regulated. But if you, if you were to take a machine in there and, and do that to, to, to modify even during the dry season, that, this is kind of the, the story of, you know, the old, when they went up and opened up, opened it up with the DA, but I mean...
Put rippers on it?
You know, there's a thing, the conversation you can have with, with the Corps and with, and with, and with nymphs and everybody, and get everybody on board, and, and, and do a thing and see if it'll, if it'll make a difference. That would also, it seems like if, if you were to do that, you would be limiting the... Would that be limiting access for river fishermen, you know, bank fishermen? What, what are they driving out there for?
The, the bank fishermen primarily going down there and, you know, fishing off the bank, and people running their dogs, and, you know, just, you know, recreating, you know, and, but in the summertime, they can walk across there and do, you know, most of that, you know. But...
If you limited vehicle traffic and, 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 and maybe focused it and, and had it be, you know, a part of a project, then that would be a way that, that we might be able to... Because I'll tell you, there's, there's, you know, I'm no engineer, but when you look at this river banging into the North Bank Road, it's not gonna stop banging into the North Bank Road. All we can hope for is...
It's gonna get worse.
Row. That's it.
Take the high pressure off of it, where it's got a relief valve.
Right.
So to your points, Commissioner Tross, I completely support any letters of support, any, even the position itself. Absolutely, there's certainly a need for it. I, and Commissioner Herzog, to your, to your point, it's, it's in the plan. I'm aware of that, but I do not support funding it.
How about if we, you know, got together with Steve individually, or whatever, and tried to come up with a, you know, a, a format, or, you know, X amount of time, or, you know, I don't know, just something... I, I think, you know, personally, I think we have the right man for the job. When he said Val Early, and I looked at her face, I could tell that she's got a lot on her plate, and that was... Unless she just took a nasty pill or something, but that's just my personal opinion.
Well, and the, the fact that none of the other counties are funding this is...
Yeah, and that's something we could ask, you know, we can reach out as commissioners to say, you know...
Again, the Jackin County, Colleen Roberts is the contact. And she is just very, very pointed that she is not for any dam removal anywhere at any time, you know. And so the, I was involved in removal of Savage Rapids, and a little bit with Gold Ray, you know. And I am not in any way in favor of moving Los Creek or Applegate, or, you know, thing. But I am in favor of them doing the mitigation requirements they were required to do on the environmental impact statement, you know. And that's where this started, was trying to get them to do that. And that extends above the hatchery, and, or the hatchery turns, and for the mitigation above the hatchery. And what was never identified was the mitigation needs below the hatchery, you know. And the Corps refuses to look at it, because if they open that can, can of worms, it's a big can of worms.
Steve, has Colleen, Commissioner Robertson mentioned, has she been to those meetings with, at the fish hatchery with you?
She came to the fish hatchery and made her point that she was...
Merkley?
She was avid that, you know, no dam removal. And I spent some time with her, explaining to her that Curry County was in no way in favor of dam removal, you know. And that we were just working on mitigation. And I'm not sure how deeply I reached her, you know. But that, and then Josephine County, they have every bit or worse financial problem than Curry does, you know. And they are very, they're supportive to a point. I don't think that they're gonna be funding, you know. But you never know, you know.
I guess, I guess that's my, my, my feeling is, and just from looking at this, because you've just stated the problem, these counties are, they're all, they're all financially strapped.
Well, except, except Jackson.
Well, I know, but Jackson is, I mean, Jackson's not in the direct line of this, right?
Well...
A little, but...
That's where the hatchery is, in Jackson County.
Well, they're not, they're interested in not taking out the dam, but they're not, they're not involved in, from what you said, they're not involved in the fishery, right?
Not, not as much, you know, I try to keep them informed. I very rarely hear anything back from them. But if, and Commissioner Tross, you know, hit on one of my Achilles' heels, is I can be a bit prickly at times, you know.
The stakeholders, stakeholders with money that are coming in here, they're already paying the lobbyists, they're paying Ray Bousheger, all the, all these ports are already paying him for separate stuff. They, they have relationships with him. They, these, the city of Brookings, city of Gold Beach, the all, city of Port Orford, all, at, at least in our county, going north, Banden, Charleston, all, all these places, they, they're getting, they're bringing money in directly, and they're, and they're, they, they get their, you know, we get, we get... Our, our, the way that we receive money would probably be like through TLT funds that we receive for the unincorporated areas of, of Curry County. And you know, you look, you got, what about, there's a lot of money, you know, that's...
Economic development, yeah.
Fishing, right, and, and so I mean, I, I, it just doesn't seem like it's, I, I can, it doesn't seem like the county should be the one funding this, when there, we, we should be a partner, we can be a partner. We can coordinate, we can help to the extent we can. But I think a lot of other people need, it's, it's, a lot of other people are benefiting without having to put, put their, you know, they're, they're, it's great to have him show up and do your work for you. And, and I think these people should be brought into the coalition. And, and, you know, make them put their money where their mouth is. And, and, and also, when you do that, you know, if you go to like a port meeting, it's full of fishermen. That's who's there. And they, they'll, and they will want this group to be a part of it. And I think that's, I mean, you could actually get some real funding here, and you could get, you know, the other thing is, you know, Senator Merkley, great guy, he responds better when there's, when there's a lot of voices, because he's just got a lot to do. So that would be my recommendation, that if we, if we, if you wanna look forward to that, we should, we should work on expanding that coalition before we commit.
Any other questions for Steve?
I'm, I'm in support of the idea of expanding the coalition, trying to expand the resource, get some skin in the game.
I can meet with Steve, and we can, we can reach out to those people, and we can do that. I've got a bunch of connections with those people, and see what, see what they say.
I like it.
I think the person to work with in, in Jackson County is the, their operations person, you know.
Okay.
You know, you guys can talk.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I think he's the one that put the foot on the funding for Jackson County. And till we've got his support, I don't think it's gonna go anywhere there.
Okay.
That sounds good, yeah.
But if we got Colleen's support, that, because...
He would go along, I think, with what...
He can put her foot on him, or... And do a little hokey pokey, put the left foot in, yeah. Okay. So, this has been a, a good presentation, I thank you, Steve, and my offer stands. If, if, in the near future, if there's a, a meeting or something at Coal Rivers, I, I'll...
And I'll, I'll reach out to you, Mr. Byerlin.
I, I've had two things that have fallen through, just because of timing and whatnot, that the new manager of the Rogue Basin for Fisheries for the Corps of Engineers, Eric Peterson, a pretty good fella, you know, and he has emailed me and called me a couple of times to set up a personal meeting, to come down here or come to the hatchery. The head of Fisheries for the Corps of Engineers has done likewise, you know. And she was going to come to the county here and, and speak or do it online, you know, with you guys. And a lot of that was led by Court, you know, following through with him, and then that's all been dropped, you know, and so, but I will be dealing with, with those two, you know, coming up, no matter how things go, you know.
Well, I, I had offer stand, so...
If it does, I'll let you know when you...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, gentlemen. Motion to approve the consent agenda is next, unless, 10-10?
Wait, Val...
Val, if you, Val... Val, if you, Val, um.
I mean, I came to speak in his favor, but yes, that's not the issue.
Okay. So do we need to take a break and then come back and do consent?
Let's do consent now.
Okay, motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent.
Got a motion?
Certainly.
Got a second, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next up is a quick one, um, discussion, action item, CAFRA grant, county assessment function, funding assistance grant. Kylie Wagner is sick, right?
Correct, and so basically what we're doing is we're, you know, they're, they're, you can just look through it, but, but I would move for approval, I was, let me just check my notes here. Um, well, the only things that we really have to, uh, hang on.
Cause these, these numbers are subject to change, right?
Yeah.
They are, uh.
By May first, we have to have it.
Yeah, and I reached out to, I reached out to Kylie, but she was sick, I just had some, I wanted to know what the changes were, but, um. She presented a pretty thorough package of information.
Yep.
And those changes are minimal, if any, so.
Yeah, this, and we had staffing changes, that's what they're talking about, you know, and that's still kind of up in the air, so. But other than that, everything's good to go, I would recommend approval.
Approval.
I'll move to approve the CAFRA grant.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve the CAFRA, CAFRA grant, no other questions, comments, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Elected official updates, is that, that's kind of a new thing?
It is new.
We have one elected official in the.
And he's gonna update us.
Morning Treasurer David Barnes, um, I just wanna take a second to point out that today's Patriots Day, two hundred and forty-eight years ago. Was shot heard around the world at Lexington, uh, that started our nation and I think it should be recognized. Um, it's a very auspicious day in history, it's also the beginning of the Warsaw, uh, ghetto uprising. Um, it's the day that the government reached out to the people in Waco and let them know who was in charge and a lot of other things have happened today. Um, but to get to treasurer update, um, I went to another meeting last night about wind farms off our shores. And one of the things that I think this, I would like to see from this body is that it. There's been enough money spent and the people have moved far enough forward on these, that I, I can't help but think that. The time for public input is over and people have made decisions on whether they're gonna move forward with offshore wind power here, we have no say in it. Um, it, I, I do in my heart believe that it will impact our fisheries, our, uh, others, our, our other sea life migration. It will have an impact on our tourism, it will have an impact on our fisheries and our fishermen, our local economies. And I, I believe in preparing for the worst by mitigating the damage that is done to you. Um, where I used to live, they put a substation in, in a, in a historic neighborhood. My wife proposed putting a stone wall around it to hide it from the neighborhood, the neighbors said, no, 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 we were absolutely opposed to this. And it got approved anyway over their objections and when they went to get a stone wall put in, the utility company said, no, that was twenty meetings ago. So I, I think it behooves us to really prepare for this now and I would like to see us, see this board. Put out a letter to B O E M or, and Department of Energy, asking for us to get, to start getting money, to start receiving money from this. Years ago, we got money, um, to the land to the east of us, um, for forestry and we lost that money. And our county has been in, in serious financial difficulty ever since. Now they're talking about doing something out to the, to the west of us in our waters and I would like to see us, you know, that can generate money for us. While I, 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 I do stand absolutely opposed to the idea of doing this. If they're going to do it, then I believe that we need to help mitigate our damages. I, I would like to see a letter go out to B O E M that says that if they sell leases off here, that is when we start getting money for it. Not when a utility company comes in, I've heard about a, a proposal by a, a senator from New Hampshire, talking about profit sharing. And I don't believe that we should have to wait that long, cause that might be years down the road before there's any profits. I would like to see it as soon as B O E M sells leases out here, that we start getting money. Whether it's one percent, five percent, ten percent of the lease that they sell. It should, I would like to see money start coming into us, if they're gonna do a one-time payment of ten percent of, they're selling leases for a billion dollars. If we get ten percent of that, that's a hundred million dollars and I'd like to see that put in so that it gets, comes to the county over the course of ten, fifteen, twenty years. So that we have a, a, a stream of revenue going forward, you know, and, you know, I just, I, I'd like to work, I can work with you on my ideas on this, they're. Hard to elucidate standing up here in front of the podium, but I, I brought this up a year or so ago, over, probably a year or so ago to the last board of commissioners. And one of the commissioners at the time was our representative on B O M, B O E M and said, I got it, don't worry about it and we've never heard anything else about it. Um, much like a plan that Mr. Barrelin create, uh, the, a report to Mr. Barrelin created a few years ago. Um, that came out with the, the dollar value of the loss of salmon fisheries to Curry County. If it doesn't leave this room, it doesn't do us any good. And we need to let people outside this room know that we want something out of this, you know. Number one, that we're opposed, but number two, that if you're going to do it, that we need to get something out of it to help mitigate the damage and the impact that it's gonna have on us. And so I'd like to open that conversation today with, with the three of you and hopefully get before the next meeting, hopefully we can put something together. That we can get sent out to the, um, to the Washington bureaucracies that are running this show. And let them know where our, what our position is and what we would like out of this. So, um, if, uh, any comments that y'all have on this, please?
Well, I know I've talked to Ted about this, if, if we're gonna, you know, if it's gonna happen, I mean, like you said, we are not gonna have any say in it. Cause they'll do it off, they'll do it far enough off where offshore that it won't matter, you know, we, but we, when it comes on shore, that's where we have. When it comes on Curry County, that's where we have something, so we need to get ahead of that. Steve Barrelin actually has a great email that I read, uh, with a presentation about this. Um, I think we're all, I mean, go ahead, anybody?
You put anything in our ocean, it's gonna have an impact.
Yep.
And it will be visible, it will have an impact, I don't support it whatsoever. Um, and it's something that the government is forcing upon us. Um, and, but, but, but I agree with you Dave, um, if it's, if we have absolutely no choice. And it's going to happen because the government tells us it is, then, um, we should absolutely be advocating and, and I believe we should be advocating. To get enough money to set some of that money aside so that we can correct the damage that will have been done because it will be significant.
Well, the damage to the view shed will be permanent. You won't see a sunset like you've seen a sunset today.
No, you won't.
Um, and I, I, um, I agree with you one hundred percent. Um, I think that we need to begin having substantial discussions. Um, a very thoughtful, um, discussions about looking at this long-term. Um, you know, we can definitely start with a resolution, uh, voicing our opposition, opposition. And, and in terms of, uh, compensation, I think, um, we really need to involve, um, several facets. Um, of, uh, of, if, of, of industry in terms of financial, um, you know, the, the consequences that are gonna occur. And, um, that's gonna be a, a very thoughtful decision, but it also has to be timely, we have to get something going. Um, because they are going to start selling those, um, those, those, uh, leases, or, um, is that what it, the lease?
Yeah, they, they, so.
Yeah.
B O E M leases what, what's.
I saw the plaque.
It's designated as call areas.
Yeah.
Or what they are, and there are huge chunks of ocean out there.
Right.
And they sell the rights to that ocean to various companies.
Right.
They did the ones, I believe they had the leases for Humboldt County, um, were late last year. Or within the last six months or so, correct me if, I don't, I don't recall, but they, they've, they're, they've already done the leasing off of Humboldt County. So it's incumbent on us that before they do that, that we make our voice heard. That, you know, if you're going to sell leases off of Curry County, we, when you, we wanna talk to you before you do.
Yep.
You know, we wanna see it at the table when, when you start doing this, you know, like you said, it has to come on, on shore somewhere. And it's not the, I've been to the original meetings on this four or five years ago and I've been on to several since then. And it's not, the, the power they're generating isn't meant for Curry County. But Kuz Curry Electric doesn't have the transmission capabilities to get it out of Curry County. So there's gonna be somebody else comes in and runs lines to get this out of Curry County, either down to the Bay Area. The last proposal I heard was to go due east to hook up with the five corridor where there's transmission capabilities to tie this into. There's still, you know, a lot of this is all just dreaming and, and people coming up with ideas and throwing them out there and seeing what'll stick to the wall. But we need to, I think that as they're throwing them, we need to be one of the walls that people are throwing ideas at and we need to have some input into what's happening.
Agreed, agreed, I think there's no better time to start those discussions than now.
Thank you.
So county council, is this a, is this a, when, we, it's easy for us to put our input, but is it, what's the legal, uh, is there a?
Well, I mean, I, it's, I wasn't actually thinking of a legal remedy, I was thinking of the island of Molokai when they brought, uh, some years ago. They decided to bring cruise ships in there and the residents met them.
Said not at gunear.
In the water and no cruise ships to this day. And so I don't know that, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't agree that, that you should accept. I don't agree, I, I think that if you accept, if you, if you, if you say, well, you're gonna, you're gonna get us, so we better, we wanna be on board. I think, I think you start by, you start by full opposition and you, and, 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 and you try to hold that beachhead. Because all the things that Dave just described, those, what he's really saying is all that stuff is just dreaming. You know, some years ago, they had a big push where they were gonna do wind generation here as well. And they went around to the various landowners and they, and they, and they paid them, cause they wanted to do test farms, they wanted to do all this stuff, you know what? I got paid, guess what, nothing ever happened, cause it's really hard to get here. And, and we, it's, and there's no way to get that power out and Kuz Curry wasn't in the business of, of cooperating with them either. And so, so, you know, there, it's kinda like, we're a little bit like Afghanistan, right? It's not fun, it's not a place you wanna, you wanna go, it's hard to get here and it's hard to make stuff happen. So if you're ever gonna, if there's one place on the continental United States where we could, where we could resist it, you could resist it here and you could, but you wanna start. I wouldn't, I wouldn't capitulate first, I would, I would, I would say absolutely not and, and again, I liked, I like rooms full of fishermen. Um, showing up and being loud and a lot of times, you know, all that stuff with the, with the, with, because the other thing, the other thing that it, it sounds really great. That you're gonna do wind energy. Except this, that's the, that's the North Pacific out there, that's, that's as bad as it gets, you go off a little, you go out there a little ways and. It's the real world, it's not the Atlantic Ocean, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not even Humboldt, I mean, you're out there and it's, it's, it's not good. It's scary and, and big water, big, big weather and that's, I mean. To talk about it, it's just, I'm like, I pretty much knew when they paid me to come to, they wanted to, they wanted to do a test on my, I was like, alright, it's okay, I'll take the money, sure. Cause when that wind's blowing a hundred and twenty miles an hour, it's, you're not making wind energy.
No.
You're rebuilding your infrastructure.
Yeah.
So I think, I think it's better, I think, I, I, I get where Dave's coming from, but I don't think that we, I, I, I would not accept it, I think it's an, I think it's a, I think. That we're far from being able to prove that it could even work, but it, but we need to bring those, we need to bring, like, if, if somebody's gonna go ahead and, and, and. And get a lease without having figured all that stuff out, then yeah, I think we need to, we need to have a part of that, so.
So we start with opposing it?
Right.
Well, I think we all oppose it, I think our city leadership, uh, in each of our cities opposes it too. So, uh, you know, maybe we start there.
It's, it's not as clean as hydroelectric, that is, is just not.
Yeah, right.
And you're dealing with battery acid, you're trying to build something and get it, yeah, well, we all know what the ocean, what sea water and sea wind and. Does to anything you leave outside, so, um, yeah, it's, it's.
I mean, we got, you, maybe, you know, at this point, we make our, our, we make our inaccessibility an asset. And, and, cause, you know, it, it all, it always sounds great that you're gonna be, some big, big shots are gonna be able to come in from out of town and, and. Show us how it's done, that didn't happen very often.
It, it doesn't, and you know, I just, I was relating to Ann before the meeting that. Where I used to live, if you looked at a white piece of paper and had nothing on it but electrical distribution and transmission lines. There was a perfect place to put a brand new substation. When you put, did the overlay of the neighborhood, it was in a historic neighborhood, it was the ruins of a bar Washington drank and was across the street, there was a sixteen, nineteen house next door to it. It was a very historic neighborhood and the neighbors absolutely fought and said, no, 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 we will not allow this, we will not allow this. The planning commission voted, voted it down unanimously, the township planning board. And then it went to the state board of public utilities who unanimously approved it. And the neighbors went back and said, well, how about these mitigation plans that Carol had put forth, you know, um, for a wall and for plantings and stuff like that? And they said, no, it's too late for that. So I, yes, I agree with your, with your position of we are opposed to it, as I said earlier, I'm absolutely opposed to it and nothing will change my mind. But I also don't wanna let my opposition or our opposition delay us or, or cause us to lose out on the opportunity. So, you know, that's why, it, it's gonna have to be very carefully crafted, our, our resolution or our letters or whatever, that. While we are opposed to this, if you are going to do this to us, this is what we need out of this. So, you know, and I think that we can, I think we can craft a message that, that covers both of those. Without saying that we do capitulate, we're giving in and, and, yeah, we just, we know it's gonna happen, I, I think there's a way to craft it that covers both sides of it.
So we have a pretty crafty council, so that's your.
Oh, I mean, I could incorporate Dave's, Dave's idea of demanding money in advance, cause people hate that too. So that would be, that'd be a good way of, you know, say.
Or you just refuse any land easements.
Right.
Yeah.
No land easements.
But they got their state, their state, so.
Yeah, the, the state beaches end at the high watermark and they're not gonna be burying under the high watermark, they need to come above that. Which means they're gonna have to come on the county land.
Right, they have to come ashore somewhere and they have to get the power out of here, so. You know, and I just, I, I think it's important to us, yes, be opposed, but yes, leave a door open to, to get something out, to, to help make it right by us. Cause it is gonna impact all of us.
Alrighty, any other comments, questions? Okay, thanks, Dave. Commissioner update, I think we can wrap this up pretty quick, um, I'm first on the commissioner updates, I have a meeting tomorrow, um. And I don't know if Ted can make it or not, but it's with the, it's with, uh, it's about the airport, the Border Coast Regional Airport in Crescent City. We had a meeting about that a week or a couple of weeks ago and it's with, uh, a team from the Merkley, um, it. Whatever, and Biden and Val Hoyle, so hopefully we can get some.
Where's that, is that here?
Yep.
Okay.
Did Ruby tell you that?
She did, I just.
Eleven o'clock, but you might've had another eleven o'clock. Um, so I look forward to, you know, having some good, um, feedback and be able to come back to you, you folks and give you some good report on that. One other thing, I, I know we've been looking at maybe this room and doing some stuff, would the three of us be in favor of taking this area right here? All this wood and this desk area and having maintenance, just paint it white, so. We have a lot of wood, 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 just.
I thought you were gonna say burn it.
Well. I know, I know.
We need to make a lot of changes in here.
But this, this would be, this, this would be a little, just a, a minute change, at, at minimum expense, paint. And we have a really good new maintenance guy who's a, like, he's just a, 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 a good painter, whoever a good painter was. Would, would that, what do you guys think?
Um, yeah, well, the only thing that I would, you know, probably just remind is that, um. I don't know, it was a month and a half ago, two months ago, we, um, authorized Commissioner Alcorn to work on a. Um, kind of a design project or whatever, um, for this room, so I would, uh, my only hesitation would be to. So I would, uh, my only hesitation would be to maybe work that into it, if you will, like, you know, because, um, you know, if he's working with, uh, some, some contractors and they had a different idea, that maybe utilize, you know, I don't know. Um, but I, uh, that, that might be my only, I don't have any objections to painting.
And, and I don't either, but, uh, that would be, one option is not to have this here. It's to use the length of the room, uh, expand the area, um, and put the seating, uh, lengthwise. Uh, so it would actually involve removing this completely. Um, but if this ends up staying here, then I would certainly look at that.
It all, it all boils down to this, right?
And, and Rubia's actually been helpful with some of this, and she will continue to be helpful with some of this, I hope.
I just hope she picks up the pace.
That'll cost you.
But, yeah, if we end up keeping this, uh, in the corner configuration without changing it, then, uh, certainly.
Just, it'd just be a, a little, just something that maybe you'll say, well, we can live with this for another year or until wind energy comes on anyway. Um, that's it. I, that's it for my updates. Uh, Jay Trolst?
Uh, I will be leaving, um, tomorrow morning for, uh, county college, be back, uh, Saturday evening. Um, outside of that, not a lot to report, um, since-
Sure, nothing will happen where you're going.
Previous week.
I disagree. Your cleanup project has been excellent. We filled up a dumpster. Is that, is that a fifteen-yard dumpster or whatever?
Forty.
Forty yards? Anyway, our, our little area looks a lot better, so I appreciate that.
So I've got a couple of things, uh, my schedule. Uh, first of all, uh, I will also be at county college, uh, leaving early tomorrow morning, coming back Saturday evening. Uh, if you're in South County and you would like to meet and you're not able to come here to, uh, Central County, let me know. I've been having meetings with, uh, South County folks in, um, in the Brookings area. I'll hold those in the mornings, uh, Monday through Friday. So if you, if you have an issue that you wanna talk about and you can't get here, let me know and I'll come to you. Uh, and in Central County, I'm here in the afternoons, and I've been staying later in the evenings, and I'm available, uh, there. In North County, uh, same thing. If you are, uh, if you have an issue and you'd like to discuss it and you can't get here for any reason, um, let me know and we can schedule something in the, uh, later afternoons or in the evenings, and I'll, I'll, I'll come to, uh, to North County and, and work on that with you. My email and, uh, phone number on the website. I also have gotten some inquiries about, uh, asking for, uh, uh, funding for various special projects in the community. I just wanna remind folks that we have a process, uh, to follow on that, um, which, if you're not sure, you can go to the website or you can reach out to, um, Director of Operations Fitzgerald. Um, and we're not making any decisions on any funding issues until after our budget process is, um, complete. So please keep that in mind and be patient. The other thing I wanna, uh, uh, let the community know about is, uh, youth opportunities are very important to me. I'm, um, looking at some youth opportunity with law enforcement and explorer program and, uh, with our fire departments as well. But we do have something that's coming up. It's the Junior Lifeguard Program. I spoke with Luke yesterday. Um, and this, uh, this is available, uh, coming up in a few months. And it's the Curry County Junior Lifeguard Program. It's open to all, uh, youth ages nine through seventeen. The program teaches ocean safety awareness, life-saving skills, and focuses on improving open water skills. There are some, uh, dates, August seventh through the eleventh in Port Orford, and, uh, Brookings is the fourteenth through the eighteenth. And you can get that information on our website also, but it's a really good opportunity for, uh, some of the youth in our county. And, uh, finally, I wanna just address, um, some of the, this is, this is more directed at our county employees, uh, that I know, always watch our meetings. Um, we are, we are creating a lot of change. We're doing, we're, we're, we're implementing some change. And with that comes, uh, the struggles with it. And there's been rumors of layoffs. There's been, uh, discussion of that. There's, this happens every year at budget time, and I've been associated with the budget for the past four years. But, uh, this always happens, and it happens because we struggle so much financially. So I just want our folks to know that we are working diligently to make sure that, um, we are continuing our services and putting the needs of the people, uh, first before special projects. Um, and also I wanted to mention, um, Ted's position. Um, you know, Ted's in a difficult position, and, uh, he's kind of the bad guy since he's the point of contact. And I just wanna, I just wanna go back to something I said in the original meeting, and that is that the success or failure of this county rests with us. And when Ted goes out to department heads or Ted goes into, uh, situations where he's gotta take some action, that action is, it's, it's in our direction. So if anybody wants to be angry, they should be angry at us. So as we make these changes, I just wanna, uh, encourage communication and, uh, communication with, with Ted, with us. Um, continue to have the meetings we're having and, uh, continue the dialogues to, to, uh, continue the input because that input is critical to, um, us continuing in the right direction. I just, I wanna thank everybody in the county that works here for their patience and, um, and look forward to the future.
All right. There is no executive session?
No.
You know what that means?
I just hope that Rubia is not too angry because I said that kind of mean thing about her a little few minutes ago.
Yeah, you-
She's been sensitive lately. She has been.
So no executive session, no higher orders? Um, if everybody wants to adjourn, let's all say adjourn.
Adjourn.
Go ahead, Matt. Yep, we're adjourned.